Counsel Lyons, but he will be here shortly. So with that, pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Hey, um, rules of order, we follow Robert's rules of order and all the rules that the council adopts during the organizational meeting, as well as other rules that are adopted. First thing I would like to do is, I'd like to make a motion to remove items nineteen and twenty.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Well, actually, in order to remove an item, it has to be unanimous.
Oh, I'm gonna miss something.
No, we have enough members to vote, but of the sitting members, to add or delete agenda items has to be unanimous.
Can we vote again?
How does everyone feel about me voting on this subject?
I think you should.
I think it's fine.
I think it's fine.
I think it's absolutely fine.
About the two of you?
Sure.
John?
Yeah.
Everyone in agreement? That I can vote?
Yes.
Okay.
So with that, the vote never happened. All those in, all those in favor? It's unanimous. We'll remove those two items. Second thing is, we'd like to make a motion to move number eight, presentation of awards, up on the agenda so that it would be neck, the next item, and then keep the rest of the agenda the same.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of doing that? Unanimous? Someone disagrees. All right, so, presentation of awards. I'd like to call up fire chief and deputy chief.
So, one of the things about the fire service is, one, because we're so community-oriented, we try to keep the community and the council involved with significant achievements that happen within the fire department. In the month of March, two things happened. We had a significant change in our shift schedule, which drastically affected the way we operate. Number two is, we had to promote one firefighter up to the right of captain. After doing the extensive testing process and selection process, Ben Friedman had been selected to be captain of D-Shift for the Ellsworth Fire Department. So tonight, what we want to share with you is both an office and a badge-pitting process.
Done?
I, Benjamin Friedman.
I, Benjamin Friedman.
Do swear or affirm.
Do swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So long as I shall continue.
So long as I shall continue.
A citizen thereof.
A citizen thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Benjamin Friedman.
I, Benjamin Friedman.
Do swear or affirm.
Do swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As captain for the Ellsworth Fire Department.
As captain for the Ellsworth Fire Department.
According to the Constitution of the United States.
According to the Constitution of the United States.
Laws of the State of Maine.
Laws of the State of Maine.
The Ellsworth City Charter.
The Ellsworth City Charter.
And ordinances of the city.
And ordinance of the city.
So help me God.
So help me God. And next, I want to present some awards for young members of our community. What I'd like to do is, first, I'll read one, and then I'm gonna ask each individual to come up and just stand up here. We'll, we'll hold your applause until the end. But this is in recognition of gold medal achievement in the action skills category of the Skills USA competition. Congratulations on all of your hard work. We know this is a lot of work you put in into this, so to get that gold achievement is fantastic. Congratulations. I will call you up one at a time. If I mispronounce your name, please tell me when you come up, so I get it right, because I don't like to mispronounce names. First is Quinn Stone. Because you're first, you can stand there longer. Riley Door. Olivia McAllian. McAllian. I knew I did. Isabel Capron. Capron? Not going well? Dylan Pung. Kia Fontaine.
Thank you.
Emma Brzowski. Brzowski? Naveya Bakar. Mason Smith. Taylor Mason. And Oakley Bench. I don't know if any of the instructors want to say something in terms of what this, what this entails, and I'm just so about to understand a little bit more before we, before we make them stand up here a little bit longer.
All right. So, all of our students right here, and of course, many more from Hancock County Tech Center, all travel to Bay Harbor to compete at the Skills USA main state competitions. So they compete either within their trade area or a leadership area. So you'll notice up here, we have health occupation competitions, early childhood competitions, different type of speaking competitions, restaurant competitions, criminal justice, different humanities. So they competed against all of the other CTE schools in the state of Maine, and they came out on top. So that just shows their dedication to their trades. And you'll also notice that we have lots of fundraisers going on at Hancock County Technical Center, so if you're looking to donate, we're trying to send our gold medalists off to Nationals down in Atlanta, Georgia, the end of June, so that they really can go and try and compete and show how great they are against everyone within the U.S. and Puerto Rico. So, we're hoping to do good things down there, so.
And you are welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting.
Thank you all.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Probably should have taken a Latin course to learn names. I'm awful with that, that's why. I, and I hate saying it wrong. And I was prepped too on a couple of them, and I still got it wrong. All right. Item four is adoption of the Ellsworth City Council minutes from March 2023. I'd like to make a motion to table that. They're not quite ready yet.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Item five, city manager's report. Manager Moser.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Just real quick tonight, I wanted to just put out the reminder that City Hall parking lot, the Church Street side, is still being repaired due to cupola repairs. Jim's making great progress, but still gonna need more time to get that fixed, so. There is limited parking for handicapped and accessibility, but all others are encouraged to use the lower parking lot. Reminder about the biannual hydrant flushing, beginning April 10th through April 21st. It's a preventative measure which cleans the lines. Residents may notice a change in their water. It's expected to be temporary, so if you see some cloudiness, it's nothing to be alarmed about, and that process will hopefully be wrapped up by the 21st of April. Budget workshop for the school department is April 13th, right here at City Hall, starting at 6:00 P.M. Cardbrook cleanup is scheduled for April 22nd, from 9:30 a.m. to noon. Anyone interested, interested in participating or would like more information, please reach out to the planning department. And finally, the Ellsworth Public Library has their Welcome to Ellsworth Open House. It's scheduled for tomorrow evening at the public library. It's sponsored or supported by the Heart of Ellsworth. That's, starts at 4:00 P.M., goes till 6:00 P.M. It's an opportunity to learn about community programs and connect with 20-plus local organizations. There will be live music, treats, prizes, and welcome bags. That is all I have.
Any questions? All right. Item six, committee reports.
I can report on the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee. We met on one of the days that was the same as a budget day, and I don't remember, all the days are blending together, but the contract with Barry Dunn has been signed, and we got to meet with those folks. And if you go on the ellsworth.gov website, on the upper right, there is a button to click on in case you want more information about the comprehensive plan.
Mr. Chairman, I attended the governor's conference on tourism hosted by Maine Office of Tourism, as well as manager Moser. The city paid my ticket, which I'm grateful for. It was great, a lot of great information that could be integrated into different sectors of the city. Just thought I'd share a couple statistics that M.O.T. thought were very important, because they could be applicable to things like the comprehensive plan and as we think about budget season. So, as was presented, nearly $16 billion are spent yearly. This is a 10% increase every year over the past few years by tourists in Maine. Fewer tourists this past year than the previous, but tourists tend to be staying longer and spending more while they're here. 25% of all tourists are stopping over in the Down East region, which includes Hancock and Washington Counties. Tourism industry accounts for a savings of an average of $2,172 of household tax savings. What M.O.T. thought we should know, small towns, were that they're especially interested in pushing the authentic heritage nature of small towns like ours. They want to feature stewardship of nature, extending the shoulder season, providing authentic small-town experience. So these are things that we can think about and integrate into how we think about spending money and potentially how we develop the comprehensive plan. I know we're all affected by tourism here, if not directly through small businesses, at least through traffic in the summertime, so, interesting to think about, if nothing else. Thank you. You have anything to add?
Nope, I think those very well said, so.
Any other committees?
Are we gonna talk about, I thought you wanted?
Schedule. Do you want to do that now?
Whenever.
So, now, so great.
I didn't want to miss my chance to say something.
So, the budget workshops have progressed to the point that Thursday will be the last scheduled session. But when we, when we started this process, we started the process, changed it this year to have two sessions a week instead of just one, so that we could get through the initial presentations and leave enough time for more workshops, to have more in-depth discussion before it just comes before the council for a vote. So, we're at the point where we just need to, to look at the calendar and see about scheduling additional sessions. I think individually, everybody has seemed like that that's a, definitely a desire to do, so. Can start with asking, does the current schedule of Monday, Thursday work, and should we just continue that going forward, or we can entertain others depending on schedule? So, we're just open to discussion.
I mean, I think next Monday doesn't work for many of us, which is why we moved this meeting, but otherwise, that sounds fine to me. One thing I wanted to propose for a meeting, I know there are a bunch of, like, the library was gonna come back, we still have to talk about local roads, there were other things that we were bringing back, but I was hoping that we would have one, final one, where we look at the budget kind of in a, in a more global sense. And in particular, I thought it would be useful if we each, if we kind of made an agenda for that workshop, if there are, like, for example, deciding how much money to spend on outside services and organizations is always one that requires quite a bit of conversation, and so if we, if we each said what, what are the kind of main topics we would wanna focus on, whereas other budget items, nobody has anything particular that they need to hash out, I just thought that would be useful, so that's my suggestion.
And you had also suggested talking about funding sources, like T.I.F. and other types of grants?
Yeah, I have a whole list of things I'd like to put on that agenda.
So if we'd started the week of the 24th, we have a special meeting on the 25th. Do we want to look at that Thursday, the 27th, and then from their schedule, the next two weeks, Monday and Thursday, knowing that we can always, you know, if we don't need it, we don't need it, but that would get us through? So it would be the 27th of April, and then it would be the first and the fourth, the eighth and the 11th. And we have a regularly scheduled council meeting on the 15th. So that would give us five sessions to dive into the budget before bringing it to the council in terms of potential vote. We have to obviously try to pass it before June. If we don't, then we have to do a continuing resolution, so even if we're not ready by that May, we still would have additional time if we needed to go into June, if necessary. So we have quite a bit of time left. But how does that work for everyone?
So we'd have all next week off, and then not come back until the 27th, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, with the exception that school was going, was, was going to present, but I want to raise that question as well, is, so that, we were trying to push the school information, because there was an understanding that we needed to have that voted on before voting to schedule the, the actual date that, of the election. But in looking back, I think we can set the election date, but we don't have to have the, the actual vote of the school, we just need it in time for the wording, and since we're publishing it in-house, I don't think we need to, to have that approved on the 25th.
We have to include a statement from the school of their final number with ballots.
Right.
Which is 40 days prior to the date of the election.
So we have a little bit of time beyond, because we, the special meeting was for 60 days, so we would have a little bit of time if we needed to, to vote on the school budget, correct? Just to give us a little bit of breathing room.
A week or so, yeah.
Because I know there's a lot of work left. So rather than push the school, the school offered to do a presentation next week on Thursday, and so if the council wants to keep that in place, we can keep that on, on the schedule as well.
You're saying move that from this Thursday to the next Thursday?
No, we, we'll meet this Thursday, but they also offered to come back during the week of, the, the next, next week, at some point, to, to do a presentation as well, so.
Like if we don't finish up, you mean? This, hearing what they have to say?
They have a lot to present, and so if we were going to vote on, this came up in the finance committee, that if we're gonna vote on it, the more public meetings that there are, the better for both the council and the community, and so that was the idea of, of having that meeting next week. They'll present this week, they'll have more next week, and then the 25th, there could be a vote.
The intent was that they don't just come one meeting and say, this is our, and then we have to vote on it without any.
Time for questions.
Any time for questions and back and forth, so they were gonna come a couple of times before they actually came for the vote. So if they come, if they come, sorry, I didn't raise my hand, if they come the 13th, then...
20th.
And then maybe the 20th, and then we would vote the 25th, is what we're thinking? If this works.
And just like any budget workshop, for those of us who can't attend, we'll watch it, and come prepared with questions. That work for everyone?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. Then we have the schedule. The last committee agenda, which is really a presentation of awards, but I missed it, so I'm making the committee report. It's a proclamation. It fits. So, I'd like to present a proclamation for consideration of the council, so I'll read it, and then if there's interest, there can be a motion. The 54th Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week, April 30th to May 6th, 2023, where as the office of the professional municipal clerk, a time honored in vital part of the local government exists throughout the world, and where as the office of the professional municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and where as the office of the professional municipal clerk provides a professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies and agencies, the government at other levels, and where as professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, where as the professional municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, where as professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of professional municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations, where as it most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of professional municipal clerk. Now therefore, I, D.A. Hamilton, Mayor of Ellsworth, do recognize the week of April 30th through May 6th, 2023, as professional municipal clerks' week, and further extend appreciation to our professional municipal clerk, Tony Dyer, Katina Van Adstein, and Marcia Monk, and to all professional municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent dated this 10th day of April 2023. Is there a motion? So I just need a motion to...
To accept the proclamation?
I thought we had to say that out. Repeat after me.
Yeah, okay, starting. All those, oh, discussion? All those in favor?
It is proclaimed.
It is proclaimed.
It is proclaimed.
And I will sign.
The oldest municipal...
We accept chocolate and energy drinks, coffee, whatever.
You didn't get that? We've left a whole bunch of...
No, it disappeared.
All right. Item seven, citizens' comments. So this is a portion of the agenda that citizens can get up and speak on any topic that you wish. We do have agenda items, and if you want to speak during an agenda item, you can do so at that time. You can choose to use this time to speak on an agenda item if you don't want to wait for that item to come up, but you'll only be able to speak once on an agenda item for approximately three minutes, so it's your choice. And if somebody would like to speak, just go to the podium, state your name, and you're free to present whatever you like.
Good evening, councilors. My name's Todd Little Sebold. I live in Ellsworth. And I know budget season is complicated time for you all as you make choices amongst all the demands of our community. Last year, as the conversations about the library proceeded, I did not come to express my opinions about how strongly I support our public library, and I regret that. So, this budget season, I thought I would come and say, there's a reason when I sit here, I see behind you our public library. It's one of the great assets of our community, and I would just ask that, as I know the conversations have already progressed, there's support on the council, but there has been conflict over the budget and the funding of the budget for the library in the past, and I just, I hope and pray that we're beyond those kinds of conflicts over the budget and that we, for the library, and that we recognize it as probably one of the primary assets of our, our community, along with our schools. I was a little bit, as a citizen, bewildered by the conflict over funding the library, and just want to say unequivocally that as a citizen of Ellsworth, it is one of the services that we provide as taxpayers, and you provide spending our taxpayer dollars, that I value the most. And I would just urge you, I, you know, I thought I would come in and say, urge you to restore the budget to the level of, but that seems sort of backward-looking. I would ask you to work diligently and constructively with the library to invest in what is one of our greatest community assets. It's one, obviously, that has conflict around the regional usage of all that sort of stuff, but Ellsworth has always been a leader. It was the first public library in Down East Maine, and I would urge us as a community to support that and view it as the kind of asset that it truly is for our community. So, thank you very much.
Does anyone else like to speak?
Hi, my name is Barbara Byer. I am also an Ellsworth resident, and I also came to voice my support for the library. My family's used it forever, and it really is one of our favorite places in the town. It's a place where all the community can come regardless of income or anything else. I work at the school, and I often hear students tell me about the things they made, or the science or STEM projects they did in the Friday afternoons at the library, and I've seen firsthand, especially to the kids, what, what kind of community it can give them and what it means to them. And I will say, I, I was there, I know I wrote to, I meant to write to all of you, but I think I might have just written to Mr. Hamilton about, I was there a recent Monday, and they were forgetting that they were closed, and there were two other families who came up to come to the library to check out books that, that same day. So, we miss, we miss the hours that are gone, but we really appreciate what we have there. The new director seems great, we love the new, that programs are up and running again, and we really appreciate what they have done, and I do hope that you guys will continue supporting it, and I feel very encouraged with what is brought to the town, and that is being appreciated. Thank you.
Anyone else? No one else? All right. All right. Then we will move on. Consent agenda, the consent agenda, all items with the asterisk are considered to be routine will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on the items unless the council members so request. In this case, we only have one item, so we will take that up. Number nine is a request of the tax collector to accept payments on a real estate purchase installment contract known as repick for Nine Baron Lane Map 102 Lot 020-001-002, and to authorize the city manager to release said property through a municipal quitclaim deed.
Are we supposed to just move that because it's on the consent agenda?
It's on the consent, yes.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. New business, item 10, public hearing in action on the issuance of business license. Crestwell Investments LLC DBA Finns Irish Pub, 156 Main Street, for new city Class B license amusement, victual, and liquor, and renewal of estate restaurant Class III and IV Multivine Liquor License. And it is a new application. It's all set. And is somebody here representing?
They are.
Yep.
So what I'll do first is it's a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open, and if anybody wants to speak on this license, they can do so Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed. Turn it to the council.
Move approval.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion?
Can we say thank you?
Yeah.
I think you just did.
Yeah.
All those in favor? Item 11, request to the Economic Development Director and the Public Works Director to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with VHB Incorporated for Professional Engineering and Design Services related to the Ellsworth Multi-Use Pathway Project.
Good evening, councilors. This project seems to keep on going, so provided a bit of a timeline in the memo that we provided to you in the packet, just to give you a little recent history, because I think there's extensive history that goes way back to when the bicycle pedestrian trail that goes by the school was created. There was some discussion on continuing it to the Down East Sunrise Trail terminus, which didn't even exist at that point in time. But here we are. In 2019, we worked with the Maine DOT and what's called the PPI, which is a planning partnership initiative, to be able to conduct a feasibility study on connecting the city's bike ped trail, again, goes by the high school, starts over by Lakes Lane. Its terminus in closest to town would be Birch Avenue with the terminus of the Down East Sunrise Trail, which comes out near the Comfort Inn and Beals Avenue. So that study was done 2019 into 2020, and the final feasibility study was presented to the council in February of 2021. We asked for direction on moving forward with the project to be able to get it fully designed and engineered so that we could become more shovel-ready in the event that there were, there's a lot of earmark dollars that are out there, there's a lot of dollars that are out there that are being put toward bicycle and pedestrian projects. But we would need to design and engineer the project in order to be able to harness that money for the city. So we were encouraged through the Maine DOT, after completing the study, to follow on and apply for what is called the Maine DOT Bicycle Pedestrian Funding Program. We came to the council in June of 2021 to request that we are would be able to apply for up to $400,000 out of that fund with an up to $100,000 match from the city of Ellsworth, and we were approved for that request during that time. We then filled out the application, and as we all know, government works a bit slow. We did not find out until 2022 that we were given, we were awarded the requested funds. And so this fall, 2022, was when we could officially announce that and then begin our partnership again with the Maine DOT and put out the RFP to select a consultant to prepare the engineering and design of the full trail connection. So in November of 2022, we put, is that right? November? No, January, we put out the request for proposals, and we received four proposals from qualified firms. We had a selection committee that met in early March to review, score, and rank the proposals based on the credentials that are outlined in the Maine DOT's Local Project Administrator Handbook. There are sections of that handbook copied in your packets. And we included also a copy of the score sheet that was utilized to score and rank the proposals. Based on that process, the highest ranked firm came out to be VHB Inc. As part of the Local Project Administrator Handbook, we are not allowed to ask for the price with the proposal. So you you have to score based on the criteria that they put forth, and then, once you get that highest ranked firm, you then request the price proposal, and then you are able to go into negotiations to make sure that it is within 10% of the estimated.
Yeah. So we, part of the process is we have to do and have a different engineering firm do an independent estimate. So we had another local firm that did not apply or was not planning to apply for this, together an independent estimate for us. And so we had what we assumed would be an estimated cost for the project, and so VHB's price proposal, they had to submit it, had to be within 10% of what our other engineer's estimate was.
And luckily, it was. So we were able to accept their price proposal and move forward with them. And so the request tonight is to ask the council for authorization of the city manager to enter an agreement with VHB Inc. for Professional Engineering and Design Services related to what the DOT is referring, this is the DOT's project name for this project, is the Ellsworth Multi-Use Pathway Project. And in the motion, it says that it would be financed through the funds that were awarded by the Maine DOT Bicycle and Pedestrian Funding Program in September of 2022, and with the local match that was approved by the city council in June 2021. I know that was a lot, so questions?
So the DOT money was $400,000, and that city money was $100,000?
So it was up to, so the actual numbers are, so the total amount of the project is 369,600. The money that's coming from the Maine DOT program is 295,680, and the local match is 73,920.
So where is the local funds coming from, and have they been encumbered?
Yes, they were encumbered. So in June 2021, the motion was that they would be split equally between the local roads budget and tax increment financing funds.
Thank you.
Councilor Hall.
So Mr. and Mrs. Property Owner in Ellsworth is funding $73,920?
Half of that.
Half of the 73,000.
Yes, because the Tiff District would be doing half of it also.
Okay, so, all right, so $36,000, $37,000 coming from Mr. and Mrs. Taxpayer. And this is simply the design. Does does that mean that the design definitely goes forward when it comes to the whole project when it's done? What's the timeline of this whole project?
So one of the things with DOT and this type of project is, yes, the idea is to continually move forward. So once we finish design, we can then apply for the, we don't know, we don't even have to apply, just we get to go into the next round of the bike ped programs funding. So we, they consistently continue to give us up to the $400,000 each year, because that's how their funding works and how they can do each project, you know, per year, can get $400,000. So once we get to the engineering end, then we go to the next phase of construction, and then we can do the construction in multiple phases, so that hopefully we get $400,000 for Phase 1, and then we get another $400,000 for Phase 2. The idea is hopefully construction would be 2025, 2026.
And we were included as part of this process into the Maine DOT's State Transportation.
The STIP program.
STIP. I don't know what the I stands for, but it's.
Program. State Transportation Program.
Infrastructure, maybe.
Thank you.
Does the 2021 council vote to approve and essentially encumber these funds, lock this council into approving as well? I mean, it seems like this was already agreed upon from the last council.
The funding essentially was, but we are asking to award it to a specific contractor. So we need you to agree to engineering for essentially.
Yeah, the funding, we had to, before we could submit a massive application to the Maine DOT for the bike ped program, we wanted to ensure that the city council would support that cause. So we came at that point to ask, even though there's a significant delay, and part of these funds are federal funds, so we have to wait for the federal budget to pass and then the trickle-down effect.
Move to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with VHB Inc.
Excuse me, is there going to be a couple of comments?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, if you'd like to speak.
Should have gotten that earlier.
My name's Mary Dickerson, and I'm a resident of Ellsworth. And I hate to be a killjoy, but I don't know how many, got a lot of new council members have looked at the feasibility study for this. I went in online and got it and looked at it, and kind of hard to read going down through it. Myself and my family use the walking path, and we have since it was built, going from grandchildren in a stroller to scooters to bikes with training wheels and bikes without training wheels, and just basically getting out and walking with the kids. I would ask that this agreement not be entered into this evening for many reasons, for like further discussion or review, one of which would be if any council members hasn't looked at the feasibility report to do so. It's got a lot of alternatives in it, was kind of hard, and I'm not really sure what the plan is for the design and engineering, which one of the the things are. But I think my first concern is safety, and there are a lot of comments on that in the feasibility study. Currently, the walking path, you cross one street, Fox Street, and there's minimal traffic there. It's an easy jump across, go to Birch Street, turn around, and come back. I'm I'm really concerned on the safety is when they get to go across Main Street. In the summer, you know, spring, summer, and fall, we all know what the traffic is like in Ellsworth. You've got logging trucks, you've got trailer trucks, that's the route for the ambulance, that's the hospital, regular traffic. And if you don't want to go through town and go down east, you can, you know, take the Washington Junction Road. And I can't imagine with a stroller or children on bikes wanting to get across there. That's a big concern for me, you know, service trucks. Number two, the current walking path is 1.2 miles. So basically, if you start down by the park, industrial park, commercial park, where there is parking, if you go up and back, that's two and a half miles, and it's a pretty much a straight walk. It appears to be, you know, no slopes greater than 5% when it was originally done. And then when they redid the high school driveway and put in the stoplight, there are two things that go like this that do not meet handicap accessibility. Looking, looking at the proposal and the future and the vision of this extended trail, I could be very, very, very wrong, but I don't see any moms pushing strollers really be on Birch Street just to go for a walk, looking at how some of the stuff, you may go down here, you may have to go up here and whatever. It's not a straight trail, from what I can tell from some of the plans, that you do that. Bikers, occasionally, I'll see an adult biking, but not a lot. It's mostly people that are walking and stuff. So I just don't know that the purpose, once you did that, that that trail would be used going down, because I can't imagine taking a stroller on a dirt path. I can't imagine kids riding on a dirt path, because we know how the wheels can slip out from under them. So I just, I just don't think the purpose would be served and used like it is now.
So I'm just going to ask you to to wrap it up, please.
Okay. The the third one, which I think is pretty important, is the impact to residential owners on this new path. I understand that there was a meeting. I don't believe this was put before the planning board. They're talking about, once they get this done, part of it is they're going to go to public meeting. I feel bad for some of those in the feasibility report. Some people can lose land. There's a possibility that South Street will be totally no more, and really encumbrances against residential people that have been there where the old path didn't have it. And my last point was cost on the feasibility. I don't know how much that cost. Do you know?
Feasibility study?
Yeah, what that was.
For the entire study?
The, yes.
Was $48,000, I guess?
Okay.
All of that was city money? No, the majority came from the Maine DOT.
Oh, okay, Maine DOT, okay. And then, you know, the $339,000 for this, what they're asking tonight in the city contribution. If you look at some of the reports in that, the conceptual costs projected, they've got three different things. A million, 70,000, a million, 195,000, or a million, 720,000 for construction costs. And from what I can tell, some of the legal costs are not in here, and there may be some survey costs. I think it's just a lot of money, be it free money or not. So I hope that they could maybe at least have some more discussion on on some of this, and maybe have a public meeting before you spend $400,000, or maybe put it on the ballot to the city to see if the taxpayers want to do this, because times are tough.
Thank you.
And you have maintenance afterwards.
Anybody else like to speak on this side? Do you want to speak?
Good evening, councilors. My name is Mark Pointe-Chad. I'm a resident of Ellsworth. I was on the council when the path extension came to be, when we first started discussing it. It's been a long, probably five years. I was also, years ago, before I was on the council, I was against the path because I live on it. I I overlooked the path, and I didn't think that it would be a very good asset for Ellsworth. And Michelle probably recalls her and I and my wife, I think it was the three of us, Michelle, we went down to Augusta and talked about this. They opened my eyes to the great asset that this path is. It opened in the fall of 2011, and in the nearly 12 years since it's been open, thousands of people have used that. If you have never been on that path and seen the enjoyment that people have, you know, from the very, very small children running safely back and forth out of traffic to the, well, to the old people now like me that use it on a daily basis. well, to the old people now like me that use it on a daily basis, then you're missing out. Walking is the best form of exercise, period. There is no better form. Doing it on the path is a very safe area to do it. You're out of traffic. You're out of, you're out of harm's way. The only thing that you have to worry about is your mother or father telling you, if you're a little kid, slow down, you know, don't get so far ahead. And it even gets more enjoyable when that little kid turns around and, and says, no, watch this, especially when they're on the wall in front of my house and they decide to, to walk the length of that wall at the age of three. To not extend this path to Main Street would be doing, in my view, harm to the city. To not extend it to the Sunrise Trail further down the road would not be doing good for the city of Ellsworth. People need to get out. People need to get out in a very safe area. The people that live on the path, the people that work in the vicinity of it, city hall employees, for instance, if the path is right down here for their lunch, on their lunch hour, for them to go take thirty, forty-five, sixty minutes, whatever it is, and go walking on a nice summer day such as today was, the rest of this week would be almost criminal. People need amenities in Ellsworth. Somebody spoke earlier in the meeting about the great asset that the library is. The path is in the same category. It's a great asset and to further delay it is not serving anyone well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, Jenna, the feasibility study was just to find out if there would be really use in, in some of the issues that would need to be brought up during the engineering study, correct?
So it showed alternatives. They broke it into two phases. So the first phase would be from Birch Avenue to Main Street and then Main Street to the Sunrise Trail is phase two. So they looked at alternatives for both phases and then broke down what the cost would be. We also had significant stakeholder engagement during that process. So we have the East Coast Greenway. So many people know that Ellsworth Route One is part of the East Coast Greenway and then that continues on to the Downey Sunrise Trail. So they were a significant stakeholder. I believe we had at least three residents of Beals Avenue on that, part of that stakeholder group.
Some adjacent to the path.
Yep, some adjacent to the path on the.
Spring Street.
Spring Street, Spring Street side and then the Downey scenic railroad. So it's the time when we asked for a lot of public engagement, businesses such as, you know, Blueberry was part of that conversation. You don't want to disrupt property owners, it's not something. So we're trying to work within the right of way as much as possible and not on private property. And that was all identified through the feasibility study of ways in which that we could have these alternative choices. And then again, it dictates what those costs would be from the very high end, like you need to rebuild an entire retaining wall to be able to sustain the load, to you could just do it right here in the right of way with minimal clearing and that type of stuff. So I think the idea is to make it very public, present the alternatives and then present the cost that could be attributed to it.
So then, if I may still, so the engineering study, the engineering of the, of the path will give you the answers to all of those things, the, the correct area to go to, the actual cost, the safety issues.
Absolutely. Oh, yeah, that was also identified during the feasibility studies where there would need to be a rep.
They're, they're talking about using a rapid flashing beacon across Main Street. So people are not going to just cross Main Street without any sort of safety measures. It's going, they'll have something like we have up here by Lamar School where the children cross State Street to go to the, between Knowlton Park and the early child development center. They, you know, in the feasibility study, there's a lot of options because they looked at what we can do for minimal cost versus what we can do if we want to, you know, do kind of the grandiose plan, right? So ideally, the section between Beals, I mean Birch and Main Street will look almost identical to the section from the Commerce Park to Birch Avenue.
And that already has a railroad crossing right there too, correct?
Right. It'll, it'll cross a railroad and essentially follow Spring Street to Main Street. And it won't be a dirt path, it won't be overgrown trees, it'll be a nice, maintained, walkable, paved, fenced off, safety path.
And then my final question, sorry, is if we don't use the three hundred thousand dollars from the state for this and we, to our thirty thousand dollars, they're not going, they're not going to keep, they're going to give it to another municipality, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Is this for a feasibility study or for higher natural engineering services?
It's engineering.
Actual engineering.
Well, we've been talking about, I heard talk just and Michelle was talking about a feasibility study. Has that been done?
Yes.
Okay, you have the results from that?
Yep.
Okay. Is that available?
Online. Yep. Or we can print it up, are you?
No, I can go online.
Okay. If you go under, I believe it's. I'll have to check. Jane, what now? We can find out.
Councilor Hill.
Does anybody here remember or know what was spent on the first section that we are enjoying now?
I do. It's about one point one million.
Okay, so there was one point one million spent.
And that's from the DOT and.
Not all of it was Ellsworth, right?
Oh, gosh, no. There is, there is, I can't even remember. Did we end up paying them? I'm almost thinking we might have paid.
I think there was some sort of match.
A little bit of like a hundred thousand, but they paid them.
So, and this is available for free to every citizen in this town or every citizen from other towns, correct? I mean, this is, and it's well used currently. Am I correct?
It is. I.
The other thing we heard from the people who live adjacent to Spring Street in that area is the ability for it to be a safe walk to school type scenario. You know, that whole neighborhood up there, they don't have a lot of sidewalk connectivity at this point in time, but if we had that trail going through there, it would give those children a safe, dedicated space to walk to school.
I think that's one of the things that, that I appreciate about that extension is it's also forward thinking in terms of where the city's growth is. We already know that there are new housing developments being considered, being put in on the other part of the city and that being able to connect the whole city with a, with a safe path is, is a positive thing. And eventually, if it's connected to the Sunrise Trail, that's, now we're bringing a lot of people into the city in a positive way. When we talk about assets and driving people into the community and driving into businesses, that's what I always hear is the justification for spending dollars is what is the return? So it, there's a return, obviously, in terms of satisfaction and for the community, but there's also an economic return, I think, when we, when we think about the long-term planning and sometimes you, you have to invest and look forward. You can't wait for something to happen and then say, oh, we should have because it's too late. So I think it's part of that overall growth of the city and if we can do it in a way where the state's going to give that money away, it's not like if we, we're not going to save taxpayers who pay into the state money because they're just going to turn around and give it to someone else. Why not leverage that and benefit our community? So I think there's a lot of positive attributes to it.
I'm going to try that again then. Move to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with VHB Inc. for professional engineering and design services related to the Ellsworth Multi-Use Pathway Project. To be financed through the funds awarded by the main DOT Bicycle and Pedestrian Funding Program in September twenty-two with local match that was approved by city council in twenty twenty-one. Do I have to say the numbers?
Second.
Yeah.
So that would be two hundred and ninety-five thousand, six hundred and eighty from the DOT and seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars from Ellsworth, half of which will come from the local roads and half of which will come from TIF funding.
Yep.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion?
Could I have a question that when we know of a date, that we have an update for Ms. Dickinson, I believe, and any other concerned citizens as to when a next public hearing might be when we get beyond the engineering process?
Yeah, we'll have multiple public meetings during the engineering process. So, yes, definitely it'll be posted on the website and Facebook and our normal platforms as well as any additional TVs and whatever else we have at that point in time.
Thanks.
Motion of seconds. All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Item twelve, council order number zero four two three zero zero, request of the deputy police chief to update appendix A towing fee schedule of chapter forty-eight rotational towing fee schedule.
Deputy police chief is not here, so I will handle the duties for this request. I believe Dave from Dave's Towing is here. So Dave reached out, he's one of the two tow services that the city police department uses for accidents or vehicles that are being towed for a very, various different reasons. And he came to the city and requested information about when the last time the ski, the fee schedule was changed or increased. And little research tells us that it was in two thousand and twelve. So a lot has changed in, since two thousand and twelve. And so he was asked to put together a recommended fee schedule that would be more in tune with what it costs to do business and to do this type of business for the city of Ellsworth. And so that, that is what you see tonight as recommended for the changes to that appendix. Questions?
Who's on that rotation?
Currently, we have Dave's and DC Towing.
How often do we end up using them, generally speaking?
Multiple times a day. And the way the rotation works is it goes, so if we have an accident right now, whoever's next on the list gets the call and then five minutes later, we have another accident, it goes to the other tow service. It just bounces back and forth between the two.
Why do we set anything for that?
Well, largely because if we didn't, then we would have a whole lot more issues with people calling complaining that the tow bill was too much, they couldn't afford to get their car out of, out of impoundment. So in order to control and make sure that we're not, you know, just open-ended charging people, we set the fee schedule. And the companies that sign up and request to be on a rotation are aware of the fee schedule, they're aware of the restrictions and the requirements within the ordinance and they ask to be on our rotation.
Is there, do we have any information about the majority of tows? Is it who is getting towed? Who has to pay most of these fees or is it?
So accidents are generally covered by insurance, but the, the other tows are typically arrest affiliated, so those fees would be entirely upon the individual and their responsibility to pay for them.
Move to approve the new proposed towing fee schedule for attached.
Motion second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes. This usual, what color is your car? What color is your vehicle?
One.
Yeah.
Gray.
So there's a gray car that's usually parked in the municipal lot. Item thirteen, council order number zero four two three zero one, request of the public works director to approve an excavator lease agreement for a term of up to six months.
Good evening, councilors. I'm up here tonight for our annual six-month lease request for an excavator. Basically, we used to own a two thousand and seven Camuto excavator. The city sold it due to not wanting to put money into the repairs and so we've been leasing one for the last five years. Got three price quotes and Eagle Rental, who is the one we've used the last three years, is again cheapest and so I am requesting to go into a six-month lease agreement with Eagle Rental.
For the public, do you want to say what the, the amount is?
Oh, yes, sorry. So it's four thousand, four hundred dollars a month and two hundred dollars each way for a pickup or a drop off and a pickup.
Is there a reason that it's, you think it's better for us to keep leasing it rather than, or keep renting it rather than to get one?
Well, that's a discussion opt, a discussion item for further, or for future. So the original thought process, when they went to this option five years ago when I started, was that the idea is, so a new one's going to cost somewhere in around the two hundred thousand dollar range, plus or minus, with all the attachments we would need. So the thought process was they, they had a two thousand and seven, it lasted ten years and then it needed a twenty-plus thousand dollar repair. So the idea was that if you're only going to get ten years out of an excavator, you do the math, for rental for six months, you don't have the maintenance costs. You, we really mostly use it only six months out of the year and the idea was there'd be savings on the maintenance side. Reality is, council has changed over the years and it's something that we would benefit from having year-round, but it's also a big chunk of change, so.
Do you know how many hours you used the rented machine last year in the six-month period?
I don't exactly. I don't know exactly. I can tell you it doesn't sit a lot. You know, at one point, we were on, so most of the summer, we go to four tins, so it's generally going at least forty hours a week and we have splits. So half, part of the crew works Monday through Thursday and part of the crew goes Tuesday through Friday, so it could be going up to fifty hours a week.
But you're allowed, you didn't get any overage bills for the hours, correct?
No, there's no hour.
There's, there's no hour limit?
No.
So last year, you paid the twenty-six thousand, four hundred and that was it? That's six months.
Yep. Plus the delivery and the drop offs.
Questions? Motion?
Well, I'll make a motion. Still, maybe in the future, it's worth thinking about whether we should just have one of those, but regardless, you need it on May first and we're not going to buy another one.
Right.
In the next couple of weeks.
It's, it's, it's for discussion for next budget season, yes.
Capital.
Right, capital. Move to approve the request to go into a rental agreement with Eagle Rental for a one hundred and thirty-five class excavator and attachments at a cost of forty-four hundred per month for a duration of approximately six months to be paid for through the highway general fund account.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion? All those in favor? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Item 14, council order number 042302, request of the code officer to continue the legal process on 16 Central Street as an abandoned property and placing additional tax on the lot to recoup costs incurred by the city.
I'm Lori Roberts with the code office. And, um, just a little background. I sent a synopsis of what has been done since 2022. Mr. Junkswitz has passed away in August of 2020. In March of 2022, the home that he lived in at 16 Central Street had a loan on it and the, the bank sent a letter via Redmond and Winchell that they were no longer going to service the loan because the house was in such disrepair. They didn't want to have anything to do with it anymore. So it's basically fallen on our laps. Um, I had been emailing Ms. Canty at, um, Bar Harbor Bank and Trust and discovered that he had, um, a widow and she lived in England. And this widow, um, I, uh, send, I sent a letter to her with what they had, the bank, having as her last address. Um, I didn't get any response. I sent that in the beginning of May. By May 27th, I had no response. Um, I, we hired an engineer in August of 2022 to do an assessment on the home, which I provided in the packet that said it needed to be demolished between the disrepair. The chimney is completely fallen away from the home and there's leaks in the roof. And so the inside of the ceilings are warped and falling apart. And then it has lead paint and he suggested that it needed to be demolished. In September of 2022, I spoke again to Ms. Canty and she updated the mailing address and a phone number for me for the widow in England. I called Mrs. Junkswitz in, um, the end of September last year and asked her if she had received my letter. And she said she did not. And she provided me with even a different mailing address. And so I said, okay, I'll send everything to you. I said, the bank is no longer paying the taxes and I'll send you a tax bill, the engineer report, and a letter about how the city's process is when it comes to abandoned properties. And when I called her, let's see, at the end of September, oh, no, that was providing the new address. Um, I, uh, called her again at the end of November and she did not receive my letter that I sent to what she had updated as the current address. She said she had a friend here. I said, in Ellsworth, I said, who's that? And she said Kevin Bland, and I knew Kevin. So I thought, well, I said, okay. She said, he'll pay my taxes. And I said, awesome. So I figured she was going to make contact with Kevin to pay the taxes and to get onto a, some type of a either repair or demolishing, um, avenue. And I didn't hear anything. And the beginning of February, I called Kevin myself because I knew Kevin and I knew his son. And I got his phone number, called him, and he had indicated that she had never called him to pay the taxes. So, um, he and his daughter spoke with her over the phone and, um, they obtained information about her attorney in England. And so I was, um, she had also told me in the beginning that she was working with Haley and Hamlin for probate. So I thought that was all going on. And so I tried to call Haley and Hamlin, but they wouldn't give me any information. So it wasn't until I, um, turned everything over to our attorney because I wasn't getting anywhere. And he was able to find out that she had no business at Haley and Hamlin as of yet and that, um, her attorney in England, um, was going to contact her to see what she wanted to do with the, the fact that we were trying to get this building either brought up to standard or demolished. And, um, he hasn't gotten that much out of her attorney. They're not really returning his calls. So at this point, I was going to have Kevin come and talk about his discussion with her and, um, kind of update you on that. It's not that skewed. They don't like.
Why was I?
Oh, sorry.
Um, so anyway, uh, we, I met, I, I met and we talked. We called Caroline and, uh, we spoke to Caroline. And she says, well, she said, she thought I was going to take care of the problem. I said, Caroline, I don't, I can't take care of the problem. I don't have, legally, I can't take care of the problem. She said that she had her lawyer looking into it. Well, nothing happened there either. So we've tried to reach her a couple of times and, uh, to no avail. She, uh, I called Haley and Hamlin also and I spoke with, uh, Melissa Hale. And Melissa told me that, no, sorry, I can't tell you. I can't even tell you if she's a client of ours. I said, well, that's not good. So we, uh, Lori kind of filled me in on what was going on then, what was happening there. And I guess we're at a point where Lori's got to do what she's got to do, I guess, because Caroline's not returning phone calls. She's, and there's a time difference. There's like six hours difference, um, over in England there. But, you know, if I get up at seven o'clock and call her, it's one o'clock over there. And, um, uh, one o'clock is cocktail time, I guess. But she, uh, she does, she, uh, either chooses not to pick up on the phone or, and I've emailed her too. I made several attempts to email her. But I, it, it's, you know, when I lived there on Central Street, I was a neighbor there, next door. And they would come up here for several weeks at a time, sometimes at a month at a time. And what they did, you know, they, you know, they were good neighbors and everything. And they made an arrangement with me that when they went back to England, you know, just kind of keep an eye on the place. Well, I did keep an eye on the place. But, you know, the cops were calling me all the time that somebody broke into it and broke in. Well, now you don't have to break in. You can walk where the chimney is or walk in anywhere, really. I mean, places, I'm surprised the place hasn't burned because, you know, the kids have been partying in there and stuff. But the place is falling apart.
Hey, thank you, sir. So my request is that the city council consider determining that 16 Central Street is a hazard. We would consider it an attractive nuisance. It draws animals, it draws kids, it draws, it's just unsafe. And that, uh, set a timeline for the property owner, owner to demolish the structure. And if the structure's not demolished within that timeframe set by the city council, the attorney will file with the superior court to demolish the structure and place a special tax on the property to recoup the city's costs. Mr. Hammer stated there may be an issue serving her in England because it does have to be a personal service. But he would work, um, work on it if the council were to instruct him to do so.
So we must have a lien on that property?
No, it's that the taxes are, they're due from September and March.
Oh, okay.
But that's it. So it's not at the lien process yet. So we don't own it.
Let's make sure we wave for closure.
No.
Before we take, just check, is there anybody, did anybody want to speak on this?
The property currently is under the city's liability because there's no other.
Right, the bank has dropped it and the gentleman that owned it has passed. And with his widow not responding, there's really no place else for me to turn. And instead of it being caught on fire and burning other homes near it, I just.
Uh, one of the things that I was told, I can't remember. The property was, uh, only in Ray, Carol, uh, Ray's, Junkswitz's name and not Ray and Caroline. So what I was told with it, when, when he died, it had to go through the post-probate and she had to file to get it put in her name so that she could add claim to it. So as far as I know, it's still his estate, it's not hers.
Also, the special tax that would, if you recover the cost of demolition, if Caroline continues to not be responsive and nobody else comes to, to claim responsibility, does anybody ever pay that tax or does it?
So we would go through a lien process, which Michelle was speaking of. And then it would come back to the city. So all those fees, the attorney's fees and any special tax would be added on to what the base amount would be before we would take any bids. We would ask for over that amount. So the city would be recouped.
Wouldn't work in Ellsworth name. I assume the lawyer's office that decided to stop doing this, he must have had a life estate, I would assume. And that lawyer's office must have written instructions how to take care of that estate. Wouldn't they be still liable to pay for the expenditures on the property until they got the next of kin?
So the lawyer that contacted me was Redmond and Winchell and that was on behalf of Bar Harbor Banking and Trust. They just said they were no longer going to service the loan. So they were leaving the city's hands to take care of.
Do you interest in finding out where his money is?
So, well, and I think that, that speaks to what you're asking is, is you're basically asking to continue the process, which will, which will become a legal process. And, and maybe some of those answers will be discovered by going forward as opposed to just leaving it sitting there and not, not taking any action. So I think that's a piece of it because it is, some things might come up as a result of continuing the process.
And you're requesting that the council set a timeline for demolition as well? Is there a reasonable, is there precedent for how long that might be?
Um, you know, she's in England. I would at least give it, I, I think fairness would be a month, two months. I mean, it's, it's, it's up to you. I don't want to speak for you and put words in your mouth, but. And then if she doesn't fulfill that, then our attorney will start the process.
Is there a motion?
Move to determine that 16 Central Street is a hazard, attractive nuisance, and to set, I don't know, like if I wanted to demolish my house today, how long would it take me to find someone to do that? Does anybody know the answer to that?
If she were just to get a contract with somebody, that would be enough for me. Let's say she contracted one of our contractors and they couldn't get to it for six months. But I, I see some sort of contract between her and that company.
Yeah, so.
I, I would be satisfied, so.
Yeah, so I'll say, um, determine that 16 Central Street is a hazard, attractive nuisance, and set a timeline for two months for the property owner to either demolish the structure or enter into a contract with someone to demolish the structure. And do I have to keep going? If it's not demolished within the timeframe, the attorney will file with superior court to demolish the structure and place a special tax on the property to recoup the city's costs.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion?
I have just a question. Is there a similar, um, case that has had the same treatment?
No.
Is there a similar case?
Yes, we do have other abandoned structures, but this one is the worst of the abandoned structures and that's why we're starting with that one.
Okay.
Motion a second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Item 15, council order number 042303, request of the facilities director to award a contract for mulching.
So I think this is the last one for a while. All right, as you know, I was asked to, uh, contact and put out some bids for mulching on the, uh, city-owned property. Think you have before you the locations. I received three bids back and all three are reputable local contractors. And, you know, I recommend going with the lowest bidder.
Does anybody want to speak on this?
Who's done this in the past?
Pardon?
Who's done this job in the past?
The Croffords. The Croffords did it for years.
Just as a volunteer?
No, they were paid.
Or you're saying that was who we hired?
Yep, yep. And we've actually expanded quite a bit from what the Croffords did, to include Norton Park. Because years, two years ago, we discontinued a contract that we had for the maintenance of Norton Park because we weren't satisfied with what was being done for the money we were paying. Um, and then we added some additional places throughout the city as well for this work. It's not just mulching. It's mulching, but it's also planting, cleaning up of blowdowns.
Pruning.
Pruning, weeding.
Edge trimming.
So it's quite extensive.
Councilor Hanson, you're really good at making motions.
Yeah, he's waiting.
I can do it. I like to keep it going.
The, the chart here saying the total amounts, it looks like Dr. Greenleaf's amount is only showing the first year with the others just showing all three. Or is it really a total that's less than half of the other bids?
His first year, I didn't include, he did not include in his, and Dr. Greenleaf is Newland Nursery. Um, this is just the company that he uses or a name that he made.
He's not a real doctor.
His landscaping subsidiary. And he, uh, his first year, it's a three-year, it's a three-year contract. His first year, because of the extent of cleanup that needs to be done, especially on High Street, um, where nothing was done last year, his first year bid was 14.5. The second year is 13.5. And then the third year is an even 12 for a total of a $40,000 over three-year contract. I called him personally after we opened the bids, spoke to him and said, he was one of the individuals that I took around town, showed every aspect of what needed to be done. There was four different representatives that I took around town and showed them everything that needed to be done. And he said, yeah, that's what I'm bidding. Okay.
So the other ones, the quaint country in the Homes, Homestead, Homestead?
Homestead Earthworks.
Um, that, those totals were 44,000 or 38,000. That's also over three years.
No.
No, that's for one single year. Okay. Move to allow manager Moser to contract with Dr. Greenleaf landscape services for three years to perform gar, garden and mulch maintenance.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion?
If, if we're not satisfied, is there an opt-out of that three years?
Yes, I'm going to, uh, manager Moser is kind of like the contract that we've started to use with the 30-day, um, either-party cancellation clause in our contract. So unfortunately, if we're not happy though, we may be stuck if we cancel in the middle of the year. We may.
But we won't have to go on for the other two.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you very much. I think I'm done for.
No, we'll see you next month.
This budget.
No, you'll be back.
Nice turn.
Item 16, Discussion on Ellsworth Opting In to Recreational Marijuana and Associated Barriers and Regulations, Presentation for the Main Office of Cannabis Policy, Ellsworth Code Enforcement, Heather Florio Desert Harvest and New World Organics. This is sponsored by Councilor Stein, so I am turning it over to you.
Thank you. So a little bit of the history here. I'm new to the council this year. One of my first duties or opportunities was to attend a Main Office of Tourism, sorry, Main Office of Cannabis Policy and Main Municipal Association. Presentation on Navigating the Legal Landscape for Medical and Adult-Use Marijuana, which I found complex and tough, but also interesting. I shared it at council during committee reports after the presentation. Afterward, several community members and businesses reached out wanting more information or wanting to continue the conversation. I know that this council in previous years has seen presentations by the OCP. I thought it was time, in light of so many people reaching out, to get the conversation going again. So there were two specific businesses that reached out to present because, partly because of the date change at the council meeting. I think both, unless I'm mistaken, have... Is anybody here from, no? Okay. So both businesses were unable to attend, but in light of their attendance, we have representatives from the OCP, OCP, sorry, Office of Cannabis Policy of Maine, and our Code Enforcement Officer, Laurie, as well, to talk about what it might look like for a city to opt-in, which means to allow cannabis, whether medical or adult use. So I'll turn it over to the OCP, and they will be open after a brief presentation to questions from the council and to the community.
Well, thank you, everyone, for the invitation to speak with you. Thank you also for the opportunity to speak remotely. It was a late day in Augusta today, so getting out to Ellsworth would have meant I probably got a speeding, would have gotten a speeding ticket along the way, so I appreciate the accommodation. My name is John Gudak. I'm the Director of the Office of Cannabis Policy. We're going to provide a brief presentation to you about the, a broad overview of what the opting-in system looks like, what cannabis regulation looks like at the municipal level, and how municipalities work with the state. And of course, we're open to any and all questions that you have. I'm going to turn it over to my colleague Lisa Roberts, who, she'll introduce herself, and then she'll conduct the presentation.
All right. Hi, everyone. I'm just going to take a second to make sure that I've got all my tech sorted out, and I will share my screen. Okay, can everybody see the first slide of PowerPoint here?
Yes.
Can I see some nodding heads? Great. So again, my name is Lisa Roberts. I am the Deputy Director of Strategic Initiatives, and we're just going to jump right on in. So here we have a cannabis timeline. And as many of you guys know, Main Cannabis Experiment with cannabis back in the late '70s when we criminalized it. And since then, we've really embraced cannabis, beginning with the passage of the Main Medical Use of Marijuana Act in 2009, which provided a regulatory framework for our medical cannabis industry. We then did that again with our recreational in 2016. 2019, OCP came into existence. And then right in the middle of the COVID pandemic is when we actually launched our first adult-use cannabis stores. And today, we estimate that about 14% of main municipalities have opted in for retail sales, and that by the end of the year, we will have at least 10,000 people working in the cannabis industry, which is great for the state of Maine. But we're here to talk about, you know, why this is good for Ellsworth. And so let's talk about that. What we know is that cannabis is being bought, sold, and consumed in every main community. What we want to make sure is that that cannabis is being sourced from our regulated market. Because if it's not coming from a regulated market, it is coming from the illicit market. And we definitely do not want that to happen, because a well-regulated market has three pillars. It is tracked, it's tested, and it's taxed. So let's start with the first, that is tracking. Well, tracking and testing are both incredibly important, particularly for product safety and quality assurance. That allows us to do recalls if we ever need to. Fortunately, we have not had to at this point. But that is a really important mechanism for protecting public health and safety. As is testing. We need to make sure that the products that people are putting into their body are consumable. And so we make sure that there's, you know, no mold, mildew, pesticides, chemicals, heavy metals that are harmful to humans in those products before making it to retail. And then, of course, the taxing component is really important, because it generates a lot of money for the state that then comes back to municipal coffers in the form of revenue sharing. And these three practices, like I said earlier, are really important for insurance, public health, and safety, which is paramount to us. But it also really does help create jobs, spurs economic development. And then at the end of the day, the key here is reducing the illicit market. And so let's talk about the two programs that we have here in Maine. So despite the fact that we have one plant at the core of our two programs, the way that our adult-use program is structured and regulated is very different from the medical program. So what I want to do is just kind of briefly break this down. Our medical program is designed to allow patients access to medicinal cannabis via a registrant. And a medical registrant is either a registered caregiver or a registered dispensary. Now, both of those two entities are separate registrations, but they're actually allowed to conduct the same authorized activities. So they can both cultivate, manufacture, transport, and sell cannabis plants or products to qualified patients, of course, but also other caregivers and dispensaries. Now, where they really differ is on how those rules are applied. So just generally speaking, caregivers are people, whereas dispensaries tend to be businesses. Caregivers also have a very high degree of confidential protections in place. Dispensaries do not. Dispensaries also do tend to have bigger cultivation, and so we have higher security standards for that. So those are just some of the basic differences, but since this is about adult-use cannabis, let's dig into that. And so our recreational program is consumer-centric. It is designed to allow 21-years-or-older folks to have access to tracked, tested, and taxed cannabis. And we have four license types that allow us to have this program. Starts with cultivation, which is growing, and we have five tiers of licenses. And those tiers correspond to the level of grow, how many plants or how large the canopy is. Cultivators can also prepare and package products, but they cannot sell to consumers. Then we have product manufacturing facilities, and these are the folks that take the raw cannabis flower and then turn it into edibles, vapes, tinctures, drinks. And these are, you know, really modern and sleek facilities. They range from extraction labs to commercial kitchens. They also can label and package products to sell to other licensees, but they cannot sell direct to consumers. And then we have testing facilities that just do that. They sample and test cannabis to make sure that every morsel meets our mandatory testing requirements before making it to the market to be sold to a consumer. And we have three labs in the state. And then lastly, we have retail. These are cannabis stores, and these are the only folks that can sell direct to consumers in our adult-use program. It's worth noting that the nearest stores to Ellsworth are in Bucksport and Southwest Harbor. So consumers from Ellsworth are looking at at least a one-hour round trip endeavor to be able to legally purchase adult-use cannabis. And so now let's just zoom in real quickly on some of the critical distinctions between the two programs. I'm not going to go through all of these here, but there are two that are worth pointing out. The first is testing. Testing is mandatory in our adult-use program, and there are very specific categories that we require everything to be tested for. They also must pass all mandatory testing before they can be sold to a consumer. Now, in our medical program, on the other hand, testing is voluntary, and many of our medical caregivers do do testing. However, it's mostly tested for potency, and, you know, we're not sure that this difference is exactly common knowledge, so we do just want to point that out, just for general health and safety considerations. But lots of caregivers do test their products, and it's always just best to ask. And then the other big difference is the track and trace system. All of our adult-use licensees are required to participate in this, and it is literally a process where we track everything from sieveling all the way through the workflow to when it's sold to a consumer. And so it's a closed-loop system, which helps us prevent inversion and diversion, and again, helps us facilitate a quick recall should we need to. And it's also worth noting that regardless of program, none of our consumers can sell any alcohol, cigarettes, or chewing tobacco. Now, local regulation is the name of the game here, and it's at the heart of both of our programs. Towns do have a lot of choice and flexibility in how they approach cannabis. And the big thing is, is that you can customize what this looks like for Ellsworth. You do not have to do a cannonball off into the deep end and just allow everything. You can dip your toe. You can really create a bespoke cannabis experience that's unique to your town. And in our adult-use program, it's worth noting that the default is prohibition. None of these operators can come into Ellsworth unless the town has affirmatively opted in. Licensees must also renew their license with us every year, and we require proof of local approval before we will renew that license. We're also required to notify you guys in the municipality of any changes to the license type, whether that's a renewal or a denial, or if there are any enforcement actions, such as a suspension, a revocation, or any fines that are implemented. So you guys will be in the know about any changes that are happening with licensees in your program. Now, on the medical side, it's a little bit more complicated, so there's really just two tenants that I want to note here. The first is that municipalities can't regulate registered caregivers, and they can exert a lot of regulations over the retail stores and dispensaries. But what a municipality may not do is prohibit or limit the number of registered caregivers that are actually operating in their town. So what does this, like, really look like in terms of how towns are dealing with this? Bottom line is, towns have been really creative. You know, some of them have designated specific zones for establishments using their zoning rules. Others have had buffer zones between establishments to make sure that, you know, they don't get the quote-unquote marijuana mile. Others have just put a cap on the number of licenses that they will allow. Some towns are really concerned about odor, so some of them just say no cultivation. You can do that. You can mix and match the types of licenses that you want to allow. We've also seen towns say, you know, we're going to allow cultivation, but we're concerned about odor, so we're going to require every cultivation facility to have a windsock on top. So in the event that somebody complains, you can kind of identify where it's coming from. At the end of the day, we're not lawyers, though. It's very important that you work with your town council to draft an ordinance that's right for you. And we definitely recommend working with MMA or your other municipal peers to look at ordinances that have worked and models yours off of another town's. You don't have to recreate the wheel here. And then just lastly, sorry, this is a little frenetic for the screen. But last session, the legislature did pass a bill, it's called the, I'll give you the short title, it's the Municipal Reimbursement Fund. And basically, what this does is it incentivizes and hopefully defrays some of the costs of opting into the adult-use program. It's only eligible for adult-use opt-ins, though. And what it does is it allows you to be reimbursed for up to $20,000 in eligible expenses that you'll incur as a result of opting in. And eligible expenses include everything from staff time, including any fringe benefits, to any legal or consulting fees, as well as the cost of newspaper ads or materials necessary to hold a town meeting or ultimately the vote. And it's a really easy application process. You can just do it on our website. The link is in some of the materials we've provided to the council today. And the bottom line is that we don't want this to be a time-consuming or burdensome process. We are here to help you. We will provide technical assistance to any town that reaches out to us, and we will help you walk through the process if you're having any issues. You just need your supporting documentation and your advantage number. It should be pretty smooth sailing. Here are some statistics. We've had 23 towns submit for reimbursement. Several of those are impending status, but we've already delivered back about $150,000 to municipal coffers, and the average cost per town is about, you know, between $7,000 and $9,000. So 20,000 should be more than sufficient to cover all of your costs. And again, no matter how you decide to opt-in, if you do, we are here to help the town navigate this process, and we will be a resource for you throughout. But I will close with those comments and just open it up for questions, because I'm sure you guys have a lot. So thank you, and I will stop sharing my screen now.
So if it's all right, and then we have some other people here from the community that wanted to present, can we jump to opening up for public comment, and then we can ask all of our questions and do it all at once as opposed to back and forth? Is that all right? Okay. So open it up now for conversation, so everyone has roughly three minutes, give or take.
Good work in Ellsworth. I consider this whole thing as a gateway drug. And I'd love to have the Chief of Police state or say what he thinks about the use of the majority of people using it openly in the town of Ellsworth, and what issues that may bring up. I'd like to hear that as a Chief of Police. Thank you.
We'll give you a chance. We'll let everybody go. Who else would like to speak?
I'm Matt Hawes. Live in Bath, Maine. We're up in Holden. This whole area is near and near to me for my life. I've spent my entire life working in legal cannabis, 23 years, if you can believe that. Do a lot of work with OCP. I've been an advisor to state local governments around the country, dating back to 2010, when I was an advisor to the state of California. So my team wrote the rules and regulations for Washington State's adult-use program in 2012. Would just like to give some context around just thinking about cannabis in your community. And I echo a lot of Ms. Roberts' comments and the stance of OCP. And the things that I recommend people bear in mind when they're thinking about this is, we are talking about regulating a substance that is already legal here. And cannabis is used widely. My career and my advocacy work is all built around regulated markets, because I believe in the regulated marketplace. And this is, in a way, to your concern, sir, in that.
Cigarettes are regulated too, but I could get the answer.
We won't have a debate.
Sure. So the key for me in regulated markets, however, and OCP noted this on one of their slides, we check IDs. So everyone is getting their ID checked. There's no underage people allowed in these businesses. But one piece that I think is really important that I did notice on OCP's slide is that in these regulated marketplaces, cannabis is not sold alongside any other drugs. And I think that when we see these gateway situations, in my experience, a lot of it is more of like a gateway drug-buying experience, and these people, young, particularly young people, end up in these environments when they're trying to gain access to cannabis, and they get exposed to other drugs that are sold in those illegal channels, which I'm not a supporter of this at all. So I think bringing this stuff all into the regulated marketplace largely brings an advantage. And the other key piece to remember is that over the last five years, particularly in the last few years, law enforcement has really rolled back the prioritizing the use of funds to investigate and prosecute criminal activity in the cannabis market, which in some ways is a positive, because they're using those resources in, you know, ways of fighting opioids and things like this. However, it's created like kind of a Wild West free market where, you know, you can just go do it. So as regulated operators, I encourage everyone to remember that we choose to be regulated, and that any time you're engaging with a regulated operator and a licensed operator, you're dealing with someone who cares enough about the things that I'm speaking of and the things that OCP is speaking of, that we actually go out, make our lives considerably harder, go through many more challenges, because we genuinely believe that bringing this into a regulated framework is the ultimate benefit for our communities. Many of us have dedicated our lives to doing it. Like OCP, you have local community people who are also available to you as a resource. I personally would always be available. I'm a Director of the Main Cannabis Industry Association. You're always free to reach out to Main Cannabis Industry Association at maincannabisindustry.com. And, you know, we're happy to engage and kind of walk you through and bring any, some objective knowledge on any of these topics that you may find interesting. So there are resources out there, and thank you for your consideration.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
It looks like Anthony St. Peter may have joined the Zoom. I'm sure he did for a second there, but I'm not sure if he's still. I just saw his name there.
Well, we'll see if he joins. But let's open up to the council for questions, comments.
I just had a question about the New World Organics info that was in the packet. He's talking about medical marijuana, but we're not talking about medical marijuana, right? We're talking about recreational.
Well, we're talking about, it sounds like all of, the whole gamut of options, which are both medical and adult use.
Because we do have some providers of medical marijuana in our city, right?
Yeah, maybe it would be helpful to hear from you, Laurie, about what already exists in the town and where that falls under licensing and permitting.
You just couldn't go the other way, could you? We're all cringing now.
Okay. All right. So our ordinance, Chapter 56 Unified Development Ordinance, allows for one dispensary and medical marijuana caregivers out of their own home. Now, we have one caregiver on Main Street before we had any ordinance regulation written. So she was, that's how she got there on Main Street. So what it means if you're a caregiver out of your own home, you have to follow the home occupation rules set forth also in the Unified Development Ordinance. There is times of days, how many people you can have, et cetera. But again, you have to be out of your own home doing this. If you chose as a council that you wanted to look into retail marijuana, you would instruct the staff to develop an ordinance, whether it be in Chapter 56 or a standalone ordinance. The standalone ordinance wouldn't go through the planning board process. But Chapter 56, the Unified Development Ordinance, if we added it in that ordinance, there would be a planning board project in there which they would develop. After the ordinance is developed, then they would read it and then recommend it to you, et cetera. And then, so, you know, it's, there's a process for us to do it. It would be instructed through you if that was what you wanted to do.
And that sounds like it would be the same or a similar process for medical as for adult use beyond that one that is currently allowed if it's not a at-home caregiver?
Yes.
Which I believe is what Mr. St. Peters was asking about.
I see.
This is probably a question for OCP, but I think it's, I know the answer. So question, comment? The difference in terms of the medical marijuana is that the legislature, when they adopted this and approved retail sales, decided to leave both in place and not morphing the two. Is that correct? And with that, your office only oversees retail. Is that correct?
So to clarify, yes, the legislature left in place programs, the programs to be separate and not folded under one umbrella system. However, that said, our office does regulate both the medical and the adult use programs in Maine. But again, those are separate systems. They're licensed separately. The regulations for them are separately. And the authorizing statutes for them are also separate.
Do you find the inconsistencies in terms of all the issues that I've heard in terms of just the positive statements about regulating? It's highly unregulated on the medical side in terms of THC contact, contents, et cetera. So how do you reconcile that in your office when there's such inconsistencies of promoting something that isn't regulated?
It is a challenge for sure, the nature of the medical cannabis system. We advocate frequently before the legislature for revisions to the authorizing statutes to keep up with the transformations that have happened within the program. It is underregulated relative to the adult use program. The adult use program in Maine, or the recreational program in Maine, sees much higher levels of regulation as my colleague Lisa said in her presentation around attracting traceability system, around mandatory testing, around graduated sanctions, et cetera. And so it does make our jobs more difficult to have a system that doesn't have that type of regulation and that type of ability to see what is happening within the program and to ensure that public health and public safety relative to the medical system is sacrosanct. But that said, I can say we're very proud of what we've been able to do with the adult use program, with the statute that authorizes the adult use program. And as Mr. Dawes mentioned in his remarks, being able to work with licensees and municipalities and police groups and other civic organizations to make sure that this is a business opportunity, that it's a safe system, and that it's above board in every way that we can make practical.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments?
I have a question for this gentleman here. What does it look like in communities from your experience once this goes into effect? Do you have massive competition? Or do you have one or two trying to jockey for market share? What does this look like?
It varies greatly from municipality to municipality in large part due to the authority that you have when you set your ordinance and you do your zoning and how you structure this. One common way that they prevent the overproliferation is through setbacks and kind of say, okay, they can't be within 500 feet of each other. And they're zoned specifically to this area. So then just by geography and the nature of the mathematics, they're limited in the number of them. I think there is a benefit, of course, like pretty much any free market capital enterprise, where having some competition involved in it is a positive thing. So I think the key for every municipality is to kind of strike that balance and to try to find, you know, what is really the best fit here. But again, as mentioned by OCP, the municipalities have a tremendous amount of authority in how they go about doing that under the home rule laws.
Thank you.
And I'll throw this out to anybody who can answer. One of the concerns that I have most with this is the edible products, particularly packaging. How is that regulated? Is that regulated in the states? Does the packaging look like it does in other states? When you look at, you can draw on a lot of different states. Colorado comes to mind where I've seen the packaging. And it very much markets to kids. It looks like kids' gummy bears, things like that. Do we regulate it in the state? And can municipalities regulate it when it comes to packaging related to edibles? How does that look?
So there's a few questions there. Let me take them apart, but please remind me if I forget one along the way. First, the state has the regulatory authority. The Office of Cannabis Policy has the regulatory authority over edibles. There are rules in place about the types of designs that can be on those packages. But one of the primary elements of our rules around edibles is that the packaging cannot be appealing to children. They need to come in child-resistant and tamper-resistant packages. And there are also limits in the adult use market as to the amount of THC that can be contained in one package of an edible, as well as the amount, maximum amount of THC that can be contained in a single edible. And the edibles also have designations on them to denote that this is a THC-containing product. And so, yes, you're right, Councilman, that there are states that have much more permissive rules about what a package of edibles can look like visually. And I have, in the process of my job over the years outside of the OCP, I have toured a lot of facilities in a lot of states. And some of them frankly are appalling. And what the visual look of some of these packages are, that is not the case in the state of Maine.
Thank you.
You mentioned Bucksport as being, along with Southwest Harbor, the closest adult use area. Can you talk a little bit about what that looks like in Bucksport? Is there more than one adult use facility? How long has it been in business? Is there, are there any stats on that particular since it's the closest? And do you have any information about that town recouping costs from permit, permitting fees?
I wish I had more information at my fingertips to give you. But what I can say is that I can look into that and circle back with additional information about Bucksport. I know there's at least one adult use retail store in that town. And there's only one in Southwest Harbor. And so those are the closest. And then you have, there's at least one in Searsport as well. So I can circle back with more information about that detail. And I'm sorry I didn't have it at my fingertips tonight.
But as for the permitting, because the up to $20,000 reimbursement sounds great, you know, for staff time spent figuring out new ordinances. But it's not a huge incentive, obviously, long-term for the city. I understood, I think, that towns, cities can impose their own permits because they're not able to recoup the taxes from the sales. Is that true?
So I can touch on that briefly. Yes, the municipal reimbursement, as you said, is targeted toward very specific costs. Towns are able to set their licensure fees or their permitting fees, excuse me, and those vary widely throughout the state. Some municipalities put in lower amounts. Some are quite high amounts that in some cases people will argue are prohibitive for doing business. You're right that the locality can't charge its own local sales tax as part of it. There is municipal revenue sharing, however, in which funding is coming back to the city. But one of the other aspects that I think is oftentimes overlooked in the conversation around bringing cannabis businesses into the city is its business development. And that is an economic generator for the city. It's a job creator. It's, you know, paying paychecks oftentimes to people who are living in the town or city or the communities around it. And one of the questions I've often gotten over the years is a question of whether, you know, bringing a, let's say, a cannabis retail store, an adult use cannabis retail store creates a web of other problems, increased crime, increased problems, et cetera. What's interesting is the research on this suggests that vacant storefronts are hotspots for crime. But cannabis businesses moving into vacant storefronts can actually reduce those types of social challenges and social harms. And so thinking of it as an economic driver in the same way that if a bar or a restaurant or some other type of business opened in town, that's another aspect that I think is often overlooked. And I think that the taxation aspect of it oftentimes takes an elevated role in the conversation when private economic revenue is an even bigger impact for most municipalities. And very quickly, I just got a text from a colleague. Bucksport has not applied for municipal reimbursement, but Southwest Harbor has.
Earlier, you said 14% of municipalities in Maine have opted in. Is that correct?
Yes, not every municipality notifies the office that they've opted in, which creates a challenge for us. Oftentimes, we find out they've opted in when a business comes to us looking into license. But the estimate that we have is 14.1%. That 14.1% is accounted for municipalities. Many of the larger population centers within the state have opted in. So that 14.1% does represent a significantly larger percentage of municipalities by population in the state. I just wanted to clarify that point.
Thanks.
This seems so surreal. But the packaging doesn't even matter. Like, our children are not going to get a hold of that. Like, and if you don't believe that, then you're living in lava land. Has anyone gone out to the tent cities and saw all this boxen films and the needles on the ground? I have great concerns with any, any drug coming because I know a lot of adults in this community are not responsible. We know that the system's broken here with DHS and just terrible things are happening. And I don't have eloquent words to express how wrong this feels, but it just feels wrong.
If I could offer a little data to the conversation, and I'm sensitive to the concerns about children's safety, for sure. It's a primary concern of our office, making sure that children aren't getting their hands on the products that are being sold through the programs. What data show from other states and evidence is suggestive of this as well in Maine is that when legalization is passed in a state, it does not lead to an increase in youth use. Youth are accessing cannabis products from illicit means prior to legalization within a state or within a municipality. They likely continue to access illicit cannabis after legalization. Legalization is not having a causal effect on youth participation in, or youth use in cannabis. And so those concerns are serious. And the woman who just spoke, I think parenting is a big part of that conversation, like you had alluded to. And parenting continues to be part of that conversation. But one of the things that the Office of Cannabis Policy has done is taken some of the tax revenue that's come out of the programs and directed that toward public information campaigns to deal with youth use, to look at the incentives that youth have toward considering using cannabis and meeting them where they are, on social media, running these ad campaigns there, to do our best and to use that tax revenue to have that type of conversation and make teens and others aware of the risks and harms that happen when you're using cannabis, particularly in a period of development.
Can I, the Say No to Drugs campaign was a big failure, you know? But tell them, kids, that things aren't good. That was the biggest flop ever. And it was meant with good intention, but it did. I just think that we're dressing up something. And maybe the money should be put into the wellness of those that. And the data, where did the data come from? We all know the data comes from, we collect data. We can, you know, manipulate and monopolize where we get data from. So I just, I don't know. It feels, something feels so intuitively wrong in my stomach.
Just so we don't get in, this is just the beginning, first discussion. This is all it is tonight, is just a discussion. So it's a start of a process. And obviously, I think everybody here, I don't want to speak for everybody, but there would be more conversations, especially with the development of an ordinance if the city even went in that direction. So there'll be a lot of opportunities there. One of the things that, the question, so your department is part of the administrative structure of the state. Is that correct? So a department of, so part of the government?
Administrative and Financial Services.
So it's appointed, the governor has oversight of all of that. Do, given all of the concerns, and there are real concerns in terms of, you can't sweep it under the rug, there's the economic piece, but there's also societal questions, and you're hearing some of those tonight. And municipalities have to wrestle with all of that. Have you ever attended municipal meetings with your counterparts in the Office of Beable Health, which includes substance disorders with Gordon Smith? Do you go around so that you're presenting a whole picture of these issues? Or do you never do that? Do those departments not interact on this issue? Because in many ways, they diverge in significant ways. I'm just curious because as we're thinking about it, that seems to me would be a great forum to have some of these discussions back and forth with representatives that are looking at the issue from different perspectives.
Absolutely. And we do engage with our counterparts across the executive branch, with CDC and other individuals in the Department of Health and Human Services. We work with the Department of Agriculture, with the Board of Pesticide Control. We work with a variety of stakeholders. And I would very much encourage the council to reach out to our colleagues in the executive branch. We can help make those connections for you. I think the holistic conversation is absolutely critical. Whether you are supportive of cannabis reform or you are opposed to cannabis reform, having all of that information for the city as it's considering making those decisions is absolutely essential. For, in terms of that type of stakeholder engagement, for example, I'm speaking on a panel at the end of the month here in Maine for the Maine chapter of the American Association of, I'm sorry, the American Academy of Pediatrics. I'm talking about what youth use actually means, what medical cannabis for children. I'm talking about what youth use actually means, what medical cannabis for children can help with and can create problems for. And so, yes, obviously, the Office of Cannabis Policy is here to set up and regulate a system for medical and adult-use cannabis, but as I said, the issues of public health and public safety are primary for us, and we want to make sure that communities remain safe while adults have the choices to make, that they want to make when it comes to cannabis. If you'd like to use it, you have an outlet to purchase and use regulated cannabis. If you choose not to, then you choose not to. But health and safety, public health and public safety are continuously an effort of ours as we work within the office and across the executive branch and with municipalities.
All right, anything else?
Yeah, yeah. May I speak again?
This time.
I've been getting texts several times now from other people. They really like to hear from the police chief where he thinks he stands on this. I've just got several, and he said, what, did you ask the police chief yet? I said, I've asked, he hasn't spoken. Because I think he would be the main person to know what happens in this case with substances that's on our streets now. It was just a bigger arrest on fentanyl and cocaine, and other items have been happening. So they really like to hear his position, his stance, and his ideas what this may lead to. On the, on the public use, medical marijuana, yes, that's regulated. I have a daughter that has a car. She goes to a regulated place, and she uses it home. But when you start using public...
That's up to you if you want to answer tonight, or we know that this will have a lot more conversation, and that's certainly, that should be part of the conversation, but that's up to you if you want to...
Well, I'm not going to go into great detail, because we could be here all night. But, I mean, I will go on the record as saying I'm opposed to any and all drug use in our community, whether it be illicit drugs or legalized cannabis. I think that adult use, if done correctly, is possibly, can possibly be many of the things that they say that it is for a community. But I think a lot of it's propaganda, too, and I think a lot of it is false. There is without question danger for our kids in our community when you have adult use. I've combated underage drinking my entire professional law enforcement career and seemingly continued to have underage kids having access to alcohol. So, you know, saying that you can't purchase it until you're 21 is the same as alcohol, and it happens every day in our community and other communities. So I think the danger is real. I think that the concept of doing away with the illicit market is ridiculous. That's never going to happen. It's quite frankly absurd to think that. What's happened with adult use, and it started with medicinal, and it started with the decriminalization of marijuana, it became, as that gentleman stated, it became less of a priority for law enforcement merely because the, it wasn't worth the time and the effort for law enforcement because the cases weren't being prosecuted. And so more and more, and then once legalization became a reality in the state, it became so convoluted as to what was illegal amount, what was an illegal amount, and a lot of that ambiguity still exists. If you tell me that you have a legal, that marijuana is legal, but yet you can't possess beyond a certain amount, then it becomes illegal all of a sudden, then that leads me to believe that there's more to that story, and there's more to that reality. And so it's still federally illegal, which creates a whole host of additional issues with the legalization. And so I think there's a lot more unanswered questions than there are answered questions. But we have experience in our community. We've had a medicinal dispensary in our community for many, many years, and we have had, from a law enforcement perspective, we have had no issues with that facility or a rise in crime around the facility or bringing, you know, an element to our community that is something that we don't want to see in our community. But I think partly that is because the ordinance was well thought out, it was put in place to restrict where it can be, and that we would only have one dispensary in the city. And I think with similar considerations, could you have medicinal, I mean, excuse me, could you have adult-use businesses within our community that wouldn't negatively impact our community? I think the answer is probably yes. But that doesn't change my opinion of drugs in our community, and the promotion and sale of those drugs is something that I personally am opposed to.
Okay. So just to, so we don't go down a rabbit hole, this agenda item was a discussion on the opting in, the associated barriers regulation, hearing the presentation, getting some questions answered it. So I don't want to drift down into, we're not making decisions, that's not on the agenda tonight. It was simply discussion. So we don't want to go down the road of debating that at this point. We can, if we're done, it seemed like we were concluded with the discussion, we'll leave it to the council to decide next steps in terms of if there's a future agenda item that gets put on for action. But tonight was, it was clearly just for discussion, and we want to make sure that if we're going to take action, that we post that and let the community weigh in on it from there.
Can I just ask one more question from these guys on the computer? Adult use, recreational use of marijuana, Mr. Workman said something about if we pass that, it will mean that you can use marijuana in public, and I didn't think that was part of, I thought in all cases, just like alcohol, you can buy it at the store, but you have to bring it home to drink it. Is it the same for marijuana?
That's correct. Cannabis use in public is prohibited.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I want to thank you both for your time to help educate and inform, and I'm sure there'll be further discussions taking place that we'll call on you again.
Absolutely, and thank you for the opportunity. And as you guys do consider this question in the future, please feel free to reach out to us as a formal or informal reference. And as I mentioned in my remarks, if there's anyone else or any other department within the executive branch that we can help facilitate communications with, please feel free to reach out to us for that as well.
Okay, thank you.
And, Council, we all have a letter from Justin Olson, CEO of New World Organics. If you have any questions, you can email him directly as well.
All right. Item 17, discussion in action to enforce the performance standards in accordance with Chapter 56 Unified Development Ordinance, Section 801.3, sponsored by Councilor O'Halloran. I will turn it over to you.
I've been on the council for about a year and a half, and it's been a subject that I have been hot about, I guess would be the word. I get a lot of complaints from the people in the industrial park. I drive by there twice a day. I feel like it's fallen on deaf ears up until recently. I drive by there each day, and I feel like since we made the arrangement to give the gentleman 90 days to make improvements, I haven't talked to any of the residents in that area, but I do drive by twice a day, and I think there's been some substantial improvements in the progress of being less offensive to neighbors. Therefore, I would like to leave this just to a discussion and thank everybody involved for making improvements and ask that we don't fall off that wagon, that we stay on the improvement wagon.
Does anybody want to comment on this item?
Josh Wellman, owner of Maine Organics. I just wanted to say to the council that I spoke with my neighbors this week or last week, just to get some feedback on, you know, how we've been doing with the progress. And they said it's been, it's been much better. It's been much better. The odor, the birds, everything's been, you know, it's been improvements. So that was, that was good. And also, I just wanted to let the council know that the DEP is our regulator, so if there's an issue, you know, they step in very quickly. They visit our site monthly to see, you know, just to make sure we're doing everything we're supposed to be doing. They're actually going to be there tomorrow. So they're always looking and checking things out. So if there's a complaint, you know, they talk to me, and they say what's going on. So we fix the problem as soon as possible, so. Just wanted to let the council know that. Thank you.
See no one else? All right. Item 18, council comments. Any council want to make comments? Next item is adjournment. Anyone want to make a move?
Second, third, fifth.
We're adjourned. Thank you.